Good evening, everyone. Today is November 20th, 2025. The time is 6:02, and this is the Accrissa Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on Town's YouTube page, on the cable channel, and we're live. We'll be Zoom tonight. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
Make a motion to open the meeting. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me introduce ourselves.
Peter Guyep, a member.
Steve Boucher, a member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Brian DeShams, a member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
All right, gentlemen. We're going to jump right into the public hearing tonight. This is a continued site plan review and special permit of 1094 Main Street, Clem's Way, map seven, lot 15. Applicant is Clem's Way Solar LLC and Rewild Renewables. Owner is Brooks Sag Realty Trust, representatives of Bells &amp; Thomas, Inc. The scope of the work is proposed five-megawatt AC solar array. Give me one quick second to hand out.
I will warn everybody in the audience. I forgot to bring my herring eggs with me. You will really have to speak up clearly, or I will not be able to hear you, and I'll be constantly asking you to repeat.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Zachary Farkas for the applicant, with me Greg Sampson, also representing the applicant. We're here to talk about Clem's Way. I'm not going to go through a full kind of project recap like I did at the opening of the October 2nd meeting. We reviewed the entire project history then. Instead, I'll just kind of remind you guys, we've been working on this project for about three years now, and it's our hope that we can get the board to the point where we can close the hearing this evening. At the October 2nd meeting, we took a number of homework assignments back with us, and my plan was to run through each one of those, respond to them, pause so we could discuss it, and then hopefully end my presentation. We could have any discussion we'd like to have. So the first assignment was to get that site walk done. So on October 18th, members of the board and I met at the site. We spent a couple hours out on the site. I thought it was an informative visit for everybody, but we spent a lot of time walking among the three arrays. The notes that I took back from that site walk were mainly focused on screening for the folks living upon Clem's Way. We made two changes to the plan set that is now in front of the board. The plan sets dated October 22nd. The two material changes were we switched all the fences from wire mesh or agricultural fence to a full stockade fence. Can't see through it, stockade fence that'll block the array. And then we added a number of R.B.I.D. plantings in the kind of bare spots that we noted. I think as we walked up the southern road through the three different arrays, I think, I hope the board noticed that even though it doesn't look like a lot of cover there, there is a lot of existing foliage. So we put plantings in some of the open spots. So that was kind of the first item. The second was the screening the chairman brought up at the end of the meeting. We talked about it again at the site walk. But mainly if you focus on sheet C3.1 and C3.2, those you'll see the changes to the fence and the plantings. Second item was to resolve all technical and... Actually, no, I'll pause there. Wait for you guys to catch up.
He said C3.1?
And C3.2. You'll see the large plantings along the southern edge of the now stockade fence. And I think even though it's not readily apparent from this satellite image that may have been taken, I don't know what time of year it was, but the plantings were pretty strong here. So we added some plantings along this open area here and this open area here to help grow those up. We'll also have the fence, but those plantings will help break up the fence a little bit. Aesthetically, it'll look a lot nicer than just a big solid wood fence.
Now, by looking at this, you got like 1, 2, 3, 4. You got like six on this side. Are you planning on putting some mature trees there? Or are you going to just put little three-footers and wait until they grow kind of situation?
We're happy to let you guys give us some direction. I think we're planning to either clusters of trees or some larger trees. But we're happy to take suggestion from the board. Plantings are pretty subjective.
Yeah, personally, if you're going to put just what you have here, I would prefer that they be a set height of a mature tree. I'll leave that up to you. If you're not, if you don't want to spend the money on the set height on mature tree, eight or 10-footers, then you just double up what you have here with shorter ones, whichever way you choose. But that's how I'd like to see it.
Yep.
We've got other sites that have put, you know, little two-footers out there and, you know, one here, one...
They're still two-foot.
Yeah.
They're still two-foot.
And the Charlie Brown Christmas tree look is not what we're going for. I think the important thing to note is the trees themselves are not meant to be material screens, right? The screen is the fence.
Right.
And the trees are meant to break up the fence and make it look a bit more natural. But yeah, we can certainly do that.
The best screenings that I've seen on any of the solar projects that have happened in this town are up on Wing Road. Wing Road, Wing Lane?
Yeah.
And they did a berm, and I don't know what those plants are, but they grew like crazy, and they really provide a super screen.
Great.
I would ask that... Well, the rest is the rest of the board. But that's the best one that I've seen.
Check it out.
And there's still, even with those, there were a couple of them that died, but the other ones have grown out and up so well that it really still works pretty well.
But I think you're right. I think when they put them in there, they were mature already, like eight, 10-footers to begin with. And then they took, you know, within a couple of years, there is a monster screening. So again, I'll leave that up to you, but yeah.
Thank you. I would like you to investigate that one and look at what's there and what the spacing is on them. And yeah, they worked very well. And the deer didn't seem to touch them either.
Yep.
And they're evergreen. Pretty decent screening.
Okay, so site walk and screening were the first two. The third one was to resolve all technical and stormwater items with the peer review. And so I believe, I know Victoria's not here, but you should have received a letter dated November 19th from GAF Engineering. It's a one-page letter, which is good, and it effectively says that we've met all the requirements of the bylaw and the stormwater standards.
Did they happen to address the infiltration ability of those rear infiltration basins? It would be the most easterly end after you go through the wetlands. Those are the ones that I was primarily concerned about.
Yep.
Just because of poor performance or lack of infiltration on infiltration basins in a previous solar project in town. And the terrain and the soil appear to be very similar.
We've talked about it forever in Accrissa. Very challenging to deal with stormwater in Accrissa because you can't count on a lot of infiltration because of the C and D soils that are throughout the area. So you'll see a ton of discourse back and forth between our engineer, Jeff, and the GAF team to make sure that everything was resolved to their satisfaction.
If there is any way to even put a very small outlet so that the ponds drain down between storms, that would be marvelous. That's primarily the problem that occurred in Back of Scuttlebutts. They... You could actually see three areas where there were small existing channels that carried water most of the time. And without that, the ponds just fill up and then spread to the adjacent property. So that's my concern is there's got to be some way to make sure that those ponds are drained down between rainstorms.
Absolutely.
Because if they're full already, irregardless of what the calculations show, they're not going to work. Because the ponds are full when the rainstorm comes, and then it just blows over into the adjacent properties. I mean, those guys in Back of Scuttlebutts, they had fracked tanks. They were actually shuttling stormwater over the road to kick the ponds down in between storms. So it's not an imaginary thing.
I understand.
And unfortunately, when neighbors come in to tell us that and demonstrate that it is creating a problem for them, it really doesn't matter what the calculations say.
I understand. And I think my only comment would be GAF Engineering is very conservative on any calculations, and we made sure to address the items that you brought up.
If somebody will guarantee that if there needs to be tanks running, tanker trucks running away from the site to get rid of the water in the ponds, that's, that would be good, I guess.
I believe it's...
You understand what I'm concerned about.
Of course.
And I would, I'm sure any member of this board, the planner, myself, we'd be glad to go show you the one in Back of Scuttlebutts. And...
We've seen it.
Yeah. And that had all the reviews. That had all the calculations that met the stormwater control. And the people downstream from them got flooded. They had to put in, their proponent had to put in a water supply from the town because the runoff ruined the surface water well that they had there for drinking water. You know, it was a real problem.
We acknowledge that. I think it's this board's practice to place a stormwater bond on an applicant as a condition of approval.
I would like to, I mean, myself, you know, you've got the other members of the board. I don't want to have to be here in front of the camera to another set of residents that are getting flooded out and having their property damaged because of infiltration ponds on this... I mean, there's a whole ridge that runs north to south or south to north in town, and the soil appears to be relatively similar. So...
I agree with Rick, but I also got to give the engineers their due as well. If stormwater did their job, if test pits were done, if soil calculations were done correctly, which you brought up behind Scuttlebutts was not. Engineering review during construction was not.
Oh, yeah, there were other problems.
There was a lot of problems. And I think we've learned a lot since then. And I agree with what you're saying. We don't want to see any flooding. But with that being said, I also think that we got to give the peer review, the engineers, the stormwater test, everything, all the stormwater calculations, you got to give them a little bit of... What's the word I'm looking for? Credibility that it's going to work the way it's supposed to work. With that being said, absolutely. If we get call one that any water is going into anybody else's property, they get the first phone call to get a tanker out there to empty the ponds out.
Yeah, I mean, you saw what happened with the last one. The last one, I mean, I think there were three different owners of the thing before, or three different leases of the thing before it even got to construction. And for all I know, it's a different owner now that it's completed. So, you know, there's that part of our... My concern too is we don't really know what owner we're going to be dealing with and what the conditions of the sale were, you know, and what their response, whether they're going to have continuing responsibilities or not. I won't say anymore. But I would like some reassurance. I don't care if you dig a hole out there and let's see what happens this spring and see if it's full all the time. And, you know, watch the rain come down, and if it rolls into somebody else's property, well, then, you know, we still have a problem. I mean, that's the best, that's the best way. I mean, in terms of practically seeing if it's going to work or not. It's the whole infiltration thing. What's the infiltration rate in the springtime? That's why we don't build septic systems based on where the groundwater is in the summer. All right, I'll be quiet. I mean, I'm not trying to throw up an insurmountable obstacle, but it is our responsibility on this board to look at especially something like that, practical and some aesthetic impacts to off-site properties.
Of course.
Okay?
Continue.
Okay. The fourth item I had was to plot the septic system for insurance.
Page is that on?
You take a look at sheet C3.1. I got a printout here, so everyone will be able to read it. The Board of Health provided the top sheet, and the second sheet is a printout of 3.1. And you'll see just off property.
Oh, I'm looking at it on there. They've actually got it located there too.
Wow. And so just to coordinate, it's in this area. There's a very, we were talking about it. It looks like a very small cleared area right there. But you can see it's well off property and well outside of our limit of work.
I mean, the location of that septic system, that just rolls into what I was saying before about that whole ridge that runs north to south is very difficult to find a place that will pass a percolation test.
That's why mine's right here.
All the water, and also all the water's going.
And that's a, that's a good answer.
Because that's where the ponds are, is that little corner in each field, right?
Yep. Pond. It's a pond. Any questions about the plotting of that septic system? The top sheet, like I said, was provided by the Accrissa Board of Health.
Which is the sheet that's got the contours on it that are easy to look at? Having trouble deciphering the contours on that C3.1. Is there another one that...
Existing conditions plan should be a couple turns to your left.
That's the cemetery. That's the barn.
I don't have a full sample.
Okay, there's actually, let's see. Make sure I'm looking at this right. If I look at TP2, which goes down to the brook, there's already a swale on that property line that should direct any water. Currently directs water away from that septic system and away from the property on the north side. Now, let's see. Does that approximate location of that septic system show on either TP2 or TP3?
I think it was just plotted on 3.1.
Say that again?
It was just plotted on 3.1, I believe. But you should be looking at the middle.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I looked at both at the same time.
It's on 4.1? It's on the grading and drainage plans as well.
So there's, I mean, you've got a pretty defined swale all along there. So where is that septic system? Yeah. And on here? And is that the spot where it is? Or is it where the road?
It's right in here. 4.1.
Okay. All right, so that answers that question. There's a swale at the edge of the property now that will fall, run off from that site away from the neighbor's septic system. All right, that's a good answer.
Thank you.
Now, if we can get a small drain down to that swale from those back detention ponds, that would be marvelous.
Two more items for me. The next one was the legal opinion called What's a Way?
This is your original opinion, correct?
We had something from Paul Menderich, didn't we?
Did you totally put KP Law in the beginning of this?
KP Law.
Would you happen to have an extra copy of that?
What's that?
Would you have an extra copy? We didn't get a copy of KP Law.
Yeah, when Victoria gets back, if we could give her a call. She can probably mail you one. Or I'll tear it off. I could tear mine off right now when I'm done reading it. You can have that.
I read yours originally. And your journey does have some good bullet points of why it is not a way. KP Law, KP Law basically, after reading a page and a half of a lot of lawyer talk, and you gentlemen can correct me if you read something differently, I don't see a definitive reason why it is a way. Just give the blow a few minutes to skim this over.
Yeah, I need a couple minutes to look at this. Chairman, you might try to borrow your copy just a minute.
No. Actually, I wrote it online, so... It's a KP Law? Yeah. There you go.
I can deep dive on it after we left. And we used that in a case that basically, when it pertains to even the mobile home, I think it was really, they called it out as such. You know, it's just basically a drive-in.
A glorified drive-in.
Right.
Yeah, that's what KP Law is. They came up with a few different case studies that were either way. The way I read it, KP Law didn't come back with anything definitive saying that Kuns Way is a way. So again, unless the board has anything else, I'll go with the fact that it is not a way.
Thank you, sir.
Agreed.
Agreed?
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to agree. I mean, the, my understanding of the reason it was Clem's Way and each one of those homes have an address on Clem's Way was to provide for 911 access. Yeah, for 911. So that if they got a call to either the fire chief or the fire department or the police department, that they would have an address to go to, not just lot numbers. Lot numbers, if they had to respond to a lot number, well, unless they've got a plan that designates the lot number for each one of those homes, it doesn't work. So there was a request from the town to have a street name and street numbers so that 911 access was clear. I'm all...
We good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I think we're good with that.
Thank you. The final requirement that I'll kind of yield here is you want us to renotice. We published two more notices. Sorry. The final item was to renotice just to make sure that communication was upheld. There was the original certified mailers list to the abutters that went out. We've had a bunch of continuances. It's been almost five months since the original application. So we did, we did as you asked.
We sent out letters to all the abutters letting them know for this meeting. Thank you.
And those were effectively what the board asked from us at the last meeting.
Well, there is one more, though, and you addressed the setbacks.
Well, there's one more. I don't think that was a request per se. But I think we are, you know, as much as we made our case at the hearings and through our discussion, we're prepared to remove all solar panels from the 150-foot setback if that's the final requirement of this board. The one request we make is that we would like the opportunity to get consent from all the neighbors. And so I drafted up a requested condition to Victoria asking that in the decision, the waiver would be granted conditional upon the abutters signing off, allowing for us to put panels inside the 150-foot setback. And so the pink are the panels that would either be removed or would have to be consented. And I thought that was a fair compromise because I think we've talked about this a lot. Whether those panels are there or not is not going to have a major impact on the project itself. And so if the abutters wanted to participate with the project, I'd give them that opportunity. If they said no, the panels go away.
Is it possible to turn that so we can see what's being discussed?
The board made that decision, not the neighbors.
Well, we do make that decision. He's just trying to, how do we put it? Trying to sway our opinion if we get all the neighbors on board, so to speak.
If the answer's no, as I said, that's my last request. If not, all those panels will disappear.
That one, I think, needs some further discussion from the board. That's all. You know, I'm not going to say one way or another right now.
If I could offer, I mean, there are some neighbors who we anticipate would not agree with that condition. But there are some neighbors we anticipate would be okay with it, particularly where they have an undeveloped lot and there's, you know, wetlands between them. It's far off. They have no chance of a visual impact based upon existing conditions. And so that, you know, from our perspective, that's a situation where it may be reasonable for the neighbor to agree to it, and the board would have assurances that it's not an arbitrary waiver. It's a reasoned waiver request. Whereas, again, recognizing that if a different neighbor doesn't want that, we can maintain 150 feet.
I mean, if there's something that's unique to this one that wouldn't be unique, or it wouldn't apply to further one, that's one issue. But I, in terms of setting precedent for future actions on future solar arrays, if they're going to happen, I just, I'm not comfortable saying yes tonight myself.
Yeah, me either.
I'm not saying I won't say yes, but...
Well, I think, I agree with you. I agree with you. And also pique my curiosity on how many neighbors are in AIA. Not saying that it'll make a difference, but it would pique my curiosity. So yes, and I agree. I think it's something that the board should discuss further. And yes, and like I've said to you two, John... And yes, and like I've said to you two gentlemen, this is like number one or number two project since we've started our bylaws. And we've got to be careful. Setting a precedent is, is the big one. We've got to really think long and hard on whether or not, if whatever we decide with you will affect others coming down the pipe. So, um, yeah.
I sit in your chair on my board, Mr. Chairman, and I do appreciate that concern. And our goal here is to try and indicate where if there were to be relief, it would be an exceptional circumstance for which it would not lay the groundwork for future waivers for no rationale.
Got you. Any other questions before I turn it over to the public?
Thank you.
Is there anybody out in Zoom land or out in the audience that would like to ask any questions about anything regarding this project?
I do.
Please approach, introduce yourself.
My name's Kevin Fratano. I live at 86 Robinson Road, which is here. This whole section here that's connected. My sister lives here. So the two of us are this entire boundary line. And there was some talk earlier about some retention ponds or something that we're going to lead off onto the neighbors' property, which we couldn't see because it was all facing here. I'm assuming it's somewhere back here.
Could you just point out to this gentleman where the retention ponds would be, please?
This is your property here and your sister's property here.
I know that.
Sorry. The basin is right here.
Could, could you just put your fingers like on one end of the property line and the other so we can see who owns which property and who owns the other property?
I own here.
Yeah, from where to where?
From here, all the way to here, all the way up to here, all the way down to here where there's another solar farm over here.
Okay, so now what about the, does, does your property line go easterly along that whole rear detention pond?
It comes all the way down here, all the way across here, back here, all the way over here.
So I'm looking for that other property line. So, I mean, we've got, we've got you and we've got two other people that abut.
Kevin, show them my land.
So this section here is, my sister, my sister lives next door to me. So she owns this big piece of land and I own this land.
Okay. And you are, you are the center, you are the center owner?
I'm the center right here, but I still don't see where the retention ponds are going to be. I walked over the property just yesterday because we had a problem with people hunting. They shouldn't have been there. I put up some signs. And it was extremely wet back there just yesterday. And I don't remember the last time it truly rained very hard. And my concern is if we're going to have more ponds here, it's really going to be flooded. Whether it's wetlands or what land it is, and I can't see that, it really doesn't matter. It's still our land. And I shouldn't have to walk in my land and look at that. So saying that it's not going to be an impact on us because we can't see it from our house is kind of silly. It's still our land. It's still our property. It's still our property line. And it's going to, in my opinion, it's going to devalue my property. And I'm really not interested in that happening. I've already got a solar farm over here over on Robinson Road. That's, you know, abuts me. And I'm going to have now another one.
The way they designed the stormwater.
I'm never going to sign off to let them put those in on this property line. So you don't even have to decide on that because I'm not going to give them an easement for that at all. That's just not going to happen.
Okay. The way that land is, it kind of contours and flows.
Yeah, there's a big swale up here, but then it flattens out into the back. In the back, if that swale disappears, it's probably about six, eight feet deep up in the front here. But as you go back, it flattens right out. And you can walk, you know, right over here without climbing up anything. There is a hill of stuff here. But as you get to the back, that goes away. The water is just going to come right around that, right in. And that's, my concern is that what's, you know, this isn't a really good map, but the, the wetland is kind of odd shaped. It's just going to become worse and worse and worse. The more water you dump in there, the less upland I'm going to have, you know? And that's not right. Water on their property is supposed to stay on their property. Water on my property stays on my property.
If the stormwater is designed properly, which I give kudos to GAF, who is the peer review. If the stormwater is designed correctly, the flow of the land, the wa, none of the water from their property should go onto your property. All the water is supposed to flow, I think this is the southerly way. That's why there's two retention ponds, one on either solar field on the bottom half. So when the water flows, it doesn't go towards the trailer park. It actually flows into the, into the retention pond. Again, the only thing that we can do, the only thing we can do as a board is trust that the people we pay, not these people, the people we pay that represent us as a town, go over all the numbers, look at the test pits, look at the soils, look at the contour of the property, which way the water flows. That's what the stormwater is, is to really dig into where this water goes. When it falls from up there and it hits here, where does it go? And they come up with their numbers. They pay big engineers to come up with their numbers. And then we, they pay someone who works for us. We're, we're not engineers. We can't tell you where, where it's going. GAF stamps with his professional opinion of where the water is supposed to go. And then they design their field to accommodate that water. As a board, we have no other choice but to approve, agree that they know what they're doing and what they're talking about.
I sat here and I listened to Mr. Ellis speak of past things where everything's a learning process.
Absolutely.
I would really hate this to be a learning process. We're unflooded out and now we have to get some relief from that.
I think, I think we made our point very clear that we don't intend to make this one a learning process based on what, what happens.
That's exactly why I would like to make sure that.
You know, I will tell you on the other one, I will tell you on the other one, it wasn't just the fact that the solar array went in and the people downstream got, got more water. There, there was a historical flow. You can, you could go, I walked across the back of that property. There are either two or three places I, it's been a few, it's been a while now that you could see historically that water ran across the property from people downstream from the solar array. And, and like Mark was trying to say, that property on the uphill side, they're actually entitled to be able to keep the same amount of flow going downhill as there was before. And that's the, that's where these calculations come in. That's where the peer review comes in to make sure that there's no increase in water across your property from this development. There, again, I'm, I'm going to try not to stick my foot in my mouth. I have, I did not look at the watershed map that shows where the water from each one of those portions of the property come from. It should be in the calculations that were submitted. And I, I would certainly request that the board at least look at the picture part of it, not the, not the calculation part of it, to see what portions of those properties presently drain onto adjacent properties. And, and, you know, we are, what we're charged with here is to make sure it doesn't get worse. But it's not going to remove it because the chances are there are some, there's some water already that goes over your property from the old St. Amant Farm. That's all. So I would, I would, to that end, I would just request that the applicant make a copy of the two or three pages that show the watershed map for that so we can zero in on the areas that could potentially be a problem. And then we will ask our consultant and we will ask them what the plan is to make sure that there's no increase in water runoff from those sections of their proposed project. That we can do. And believe me, they will, that will have to be done.
Well, I do take offense to someone saying because we have woods that it is irrelevant to a project.
There's, there's two, there's two things we're talking about. We're talking about water runoff from a change in use of the property. That's one thing. And then the views, that's another thing altogether. You can ask my wife, you shouldn't ask me about aesthetics. So I'll, I'll go with the rest of the boards on that one.
Saying that because I can't see it from my house, that it shouldn't bother me because it does.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, our state legislature has said solar arrays aren't allowed use. And, and so we can't tell them that they can't have their use there. We can get some screening done. That's part of the discussion right now. I, I am going to, at least myself, the rest of the board can do what they want. But now that I've got the plan, I will take a walk along those areas where the things are shaded pink and see what it looks like and see what the potential, you know, impacts are and see if there's something that we can do reasonably to, to let them do their project. That, that again is part of the state legislature, the laws that they have put in place. We cannot condition it so rigidly that it makes the project unfeasible economically. Attorney General's been very clear on that. But if there are things that we can do within reason, I feel obligated that we should do that. And I certainly will walk along those sides of the property and those areas where those pink shaded arrays are.
Those pink shaded areas are still wooded at this time. I'll tell you, because I, well, I know the first two aren't, but the third one is still wooded, right? So these two have actually been, they've been existing fields and they're open all the way to where they're going to be open. There's no more trimming going on on the back halves. But the third array is still got some trimming, especially on the lower part, if I correct, if I correct, and, and the northerly part also. That's not totally open.
In terms of, in terms of the front two, the westerly two areas, whether or not you have that, I mean, this is again, just my opinion. You know, whether or not you eliminate those or not, I think you're going to have the same visual impact from those two solar arrays. You know, you see what, you see what I mean, Mark? The two westerly ones?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're talking about the 150 feet, you're only talking about those, those pink areas.
Exactly.
And, and it's going to be the same visual impact with or without those. I mean, the bulk of the arrays are, are still there. That's my opinion. But again, that, the rest of the board has got to weigh in on that too. The back one, I don't have a feel for that one. I got to go up there and, and walk it with a plan in, in hand. And I'll have a better idea then.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Well, my thought is if you have to get it. What's the word?
Get it approved, what do you mean by the?
They need to get us to sign off to put that in so you wouldn't argue about it, then it shouldn't be here. If it's not part of.
It's not, it's not their call. It's our call here. But I, I understand what you're saying.
Then if it's not really set in black and white, that yes, that can be here, no problems, no questions asked, then I ask it not be there.
Okay, fair enough.
That's, that's, the easement, that's what I was getting at, the word is easement. So if you have to have an easement for that, then I would just assume not see it even though it's only a tiny little bit. If it's only a tiny little bit, then it's not going to affect their project at all. So we shouldn't have to look at it. We're all going to look at all the rest.
I understand, I understand.
Do I make it any bigger than we need?
Just to act as the devil's advocate, you do realize that if we choose, if we end up voting to eliminate those pink panels, the next set of panels are literally 15 feet away.
That's still 15 feet.
Okay. Just so you realize that when you're standing at your property line, it's either going to be solar panels 50 feet away or, you know, it's still, you're still going to see the solar bed.
Well, the next person with the next project might not have the house so far away. It might be closer. And you start allowing this, it's going to be worse for them. Because we didn't speak up at this meeting, then they're going to be stuck with that same type of thing, you know?
And that's, and that's the decision, that's one of the decisions that we've got to make as a board. You know, and ultimately, you know, we can assess visual impacts. We can assess drainage impacts. But we can't use those just to whittle away at the economy of the project.
Well, I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's effectively what it does.
Keep that.
And I'm not saying one way or.
Need to be as far away from me as possible.
Understand.
We got it.
Okay, we got it. We understand. I understand.
Anybody else?
So, so as far as?
Just introduce yourself, please.
So, I'm Kathy Burns.
Thank you.
That's my septic.
Thank you.
So I'm still nervous, you know, because I'm worried, I'm worried, you know, like about erosion, you know, erosion of soil. And if that water is just sitting there, it's going to erode the soil. And then I'm going to have less and less of a.
Which water, maybe?
Like, if the water's sitting on the lands, right?
But it's sitting on the land there today?
I know, but we're going to add more water to that.
Why?
Because if that doesn't work, if they're ponds and it doesn't work.
So that, that field that is next to your septic is a field right now?
Yeah.
The only thing they're going to do is punch a bunch of holes for anchors and then put solar panels on top of it.
Yeah, but.
The water that falls from the sky is the same today as it's going to be 10 years from now once they're there.
Yeah, but the trees are going to take out. It's going to, they're going to take.
The one, yeah.
And it's going to run down and it's going to add more water.
They're not taking any trees that are on your property?
No, but it's still going to add.
No, there's no trees that are on your property?
No, no, I know, but are they going to come from the field?
On the third one, on that third furthest one to the right, there's some trees that are going to go there, that are going to be removed there. But that also, everything flows south away from your property.
Okay.
Because, and the reason why is because the land slopes in that direction.
Okay.
And they're not going to go in to change the contour of the land. They are taking down the trees. That being said, that I understand that. But no more water that is there today is going to be there 10 years from now.
Because I mean, look how, I mean, when you think about it, look at my leachion area. I mean, I have to have a really huge.
The contour of the property that's there today
Will stay that way.
Will stay that way. So if no more water is flowing towards your property today.
Yeah, that's why I want to make sure.
It will not once they put their, their system in. The water will flow in the same direction that it's flowing today after they're done. Yeah. That's, again, why am I saying that? Because looking at the map, everything flows in the, what is that?
Away from your property.
I don't know which direction that is, but it flows south away from your property. So nothing, they're not, and I can understand because they did, they did a little bit of that over here is they go in and they, if the land's this way, then they make it flat so everything's flat. No, they're not changing the contour of the property. If the rain falls tonight and it flows this way, once their solar panels are in, it's going to hit the same place and flow in the same direction.
Okay.
It's not going to flow towards your septic.
Yeah, that's my biggest fear because that's a nightmare.
The biggest issue that we need to worry about is the trailer park. Is any more water going, because that's where it's flowing. It's flowing towards the trailer park. And that's why there are retention ponds and swales that direct the water away from the trailer park towards the retention pond, which are slowly, it's supposed to collect the water there. That's the biggest issue is more lies the trailer park. And I'm not trying to diminish the, the importance of your septic. But your septic, in my opinion, your septic is safe. I think your septic is safe. I think both your houses are safe.
Well, the house is safe.
Everything is for both, for you and your brother, I think, are fine. They're still going to put a stockade fence back there. So even if you were to walk back there, there is a stockade fence back there. So even if you were to walk all the way to your property line, unless you get up on a bucket or a ladder, you're not going to see over that fence to see the solar field?
Yeah, I'll see it because we have, we look down, you know.
Again, I'm not exactly sure how far away your house is and if there's trees in the way that you can't see over. I'm not exactly sure.
I have probably a couple acres of trees in my house.
At the back, the sightlines for both their homes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to see them from my house, but on my land.
Well, that's, that's good, that's important. Well, that's good, that's important.
In terms of the stormwater, that's why I requested that they provide the watershed maps for the runoff from those three areas. So, you can see it, and we can see it, and we will make sure that the limit of clearing is very well defined, so there will be no filling in of that swale that's sitting there right now, for your property.
Yeah, because this is a very small space where that's high, the uplands, and that's why that is sitting there, that...
I understand, I think we understand too.
Yeah, so...
We will, we will certainly do everything possible to make sure that none of the abutting properties are affected by stormwater. The visual thing, we can, we can put a dent in that, but we will never be able to eliminate any visual impact from that project at all.
I mean, even have the fence, I mean, the fence doesn't, I couldn't care less about the fence, because it's just gonna restrict the animals more, you know, a little bit.
There's different things that they can do for small animals, there are holes left in the fence.
Don't you cut your off, but it is part of the bylaw.
It is, to put the fence there.
Well, the fence could go up, but it also calls to be elevated so it's a wildlife...
It's supposed to be like six inches above the ground or something like that, so the small, animal, animal's gonna go through.
Turtles can walk under and keep going.
I know, I'm like, I know, we're like, I mean, I just had, like I said, we just had a bunch of hunters out there, like six tents out there posted in my backyard, so we have to deal with that today too, you know, it's always something.
The fence actually might help that situation.
Yeah, you have to line the fence.
I do have one other question, there is a stream that runs along the property line, and I can't see it on the map yet. That's not drawn in, but it looks like there's like a road right kind of where that stream has that swale. There's water that moves through that every time it rains, and it's not shown on here.
The quote intermittent stream that goes through the trailer park into the farm.
You say intermittent, but every time I go there, it's wet, so...
Well, it just, it's basically, it's a run, it's...
It kinda runs along here.
We totally understand you, but if there, listen...
I wanna make sure it's not in the roads.
If there is water that's going down there now, it will continue to go down there with or without this project.
I just wanna make sure it's not getting through that.
Our job is to make sure that there's no increase.
And again, now we're stepping into conservation.
Yes, conservation.
Is it, is conservation the one that looks at that, those streams, conservation is the one that looks, even at the retention ponds and all that, that's stormwater that goes with conservation? I mean, we have our input as well, but now that's, that's conservation.
Yes, I look at this map, and this, I'm assuming is a road around the thing. It looks like it's awfully close to the property line, and that's where that swale is, where that intermittent stream is. And I'm just making sure that doesn't get filled in.
We will make sure that there is a specific limit of clearing that prevents any swale filling or anything that will further dam up the water and create a situation where it's going onto property that it didn't go on before. That, that we can do, and that we will do.
Just unfortunate it doesn't show it on the map, so you could see it earlier.
That, the watershed map will show we are all, the, all areas of that solar array that, where it drains. And we have, again, as Mark said, we have our own consultant that's looking at their calculations. They have an engineer that's got their calculations too. I've given them a little insight as to what happened on previous projects, and, and they will hopefully have some way to address that, both with conservation, because they're the stormwater permit granting authority, and what's gonna happen on this project. But it is, the stormwater issue is primarily a conservation matter, not our primary matter.
Anything else? Good?
No, I think quite good.
Good. Anybody else, someone zooming in that wants to say anything? Gentlemen, would you like to, anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up or discuss?
Back, just back to this, to the basins, if I'm looking at this right, the spillway shown on the east property line over here, if you would, is, basically, looks like it's, the emergency spillway is gonna be spilling onto the neighbor's property. Secondly, after what we've seen in the past, you know, something like this should have, I think it should have an extra high berm above at that point, you know, and it's spillway needs to go, to me, it's gotta go back on a property, if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Which one, which field is that one? Is that a field?
No, that's a far field.
Far field.
Yep, this is basin six. And we got basin, if you get the basin on the back, it'll be a basin five, it looks like the spillways are heading on. If I'm, am I correct what I'm seeing?
Whatever the plant showed, I mean, they've been obviously completely reviewed by GAF and approved.
I'm sure, but wait, again, back to all this has been happening, when you've got an emergency spillway, okay, which happened in the past, basically, that's all they're trying to do is protect, again, other people's property. And these, we're looking at these, what we got going on here, these spillways are basically right, they're heading, facing the property line.
And I think, you know, we can, we can speak to that in more detail, but I think that's specific to our, our ability to allow water to continue moving where it moves, as long as it's treated, and not at a rate greater than what it is pre-constructed.
Again, you know as well as...
His wetlands there already.
But if it's spilling onto other people's property, it's supposed, it's not supposed to be leaving your property, if I'm...
It, it can leave it, but only to the degree that it presently will.
Exactly, right, but what I'm saying, he's gonna spill, you create the basin and then spillways going back on, that's, that's the thing, that's what I'm watching for.
Now, those, those basins are basically designed to capture the water that the gravel road creates. That's the only reason why the basins are there, because everything else is previous, water goes through the grass area, it's all grass area. Basins are only designed to pick up what the runoff off of the...
The extra runoff, yeah.
Off the road.
Created from this project, yeah.
Not the extra runoff from the project, if I'm not mistaken, it's the runoff of the road. There's a gravel road being put in, which is an impervious area, where it says, just like asphalt, basically. And these ponds are designed to pick up what these roads are shedding. That's what these are designed, these ponds are designed to do. 'Cause technically, the grass underneath is absorbing the water today, as it will once the solar panels go in. It's the road that's absorbing the water today that will not be absorbing the water once the road is designed. These ponds are designed to capture the water off the road runoff. That's what these ponds are designed to do. Now, if the water already flows in that general direction, not 100% sure, but you can't have the overflow flowing in the exact same direction that it flows today.
However, this is the area where it's gonna be cutting in, which is gonna segue into the caliber size of trees that was, that's in our bylaw as well.
I will, I will take that information, and we have a new conservation agent. I will discuss with the Conservation Commission the status if those ponds would overflow. Is it okay that that water flows off their property?
I would request that when you, when you have your meeting or when you set it up, let me know. I would like to be at the meeting to, with the, with the Conservation Commission agent.
Sure.
Just to have some local knowledge, that's all.
Yeah, exactly.
Not to tell them what to do.
Local knowledge is all fine and dandy, but the law is the law. So if the law says that they can overflow on, and the water can continue onto the neighbor's property, then the law is the law. I just wanna find out what the code says on the retention pond overflow. Can it overflow, if that pond overflows, can it overflow onto somebody else's property? That's my big, my biggest question right now.
Understand, understand.
Any other questions?
Other than the caliber size of a tree that's inside of the, inside the bylaw. Twelve inch, twelve inch or greater caliber tree, you know, that was supposed to be replanted someplace. You know, and I don't know if any of this stuff, and a lot of stuff's been cleared already. We also have a pile of trees that were stacked up when it went by, where he was kinda prepping things, if you would. And he was asked to stump it as soon for a little while. But the bylaw did have a, this clause in here of trees that were of 12-inch caliber needed to be transplanted or, whatever you wanna call it, someplace else in town, you know, replaced, or someplace else on a property. I don't know how we, how that gets addressed, so...
Yeah. Is there a way that we can get a visual count on whether it's been cut already and the stump's still there, or any trees? I, I mean, we went out there, I know that that's basically a lot of young trees, because that was a field years ago, and I know the trees are relatively young. I don't know if there's anything out there that's, you know, 12 inches or bigger. But is there a way that you can go out there and give us a count of what you have for trees?
Do whatever you guys ask.
Okay.
Yeah, for what's there and what's gonna be, and what's gonna be cut, so... Because to say that, it's all, you know, it's a complicated one.
Okay, so, we've discussed a lot of things, and just so we all have our ducks in a row. Let's start from where we just left off, if you could get us, one, I'm curious on the abutters. Go ahead and do that survey that you wanna do regarding the, the abutters on the solar panels.
So, I, the, the position I'm in is I don't wanna offer anything that the board's against. And so I wanted to bring that up and ask you guys tonight. I feel like I got a resounding no, and then as we talked, I feel like Mr. Ellis was open to it, and now you, like, it's, it's a tough, it's a chicken or egg type situation, and this project's gone on a long time. We're ready to close and start preparing for our construction in the spring. So if, if it's the board's firm decision that you guys don't want any more, any more discussion of the panels in the setback area, I don't agree, but I have to, because it's time for us to move.
Okay.
I'm, you know...
What are your thoughts on the panels in the, in the buffer zone?
I wanna take, I wanna go out there with a plan and see where those pink panels are gonna be.
Okay, what are your thoughts?
And I would actually, I would encourage the, the members of the board to, to do the same thing.
We did take a quick walk, Peter, Steve, not Peter, it's Brian, and Steve and myself did take a walk out there as site visit. We did not walk to the opposite side on those two, so I, I do know what's out there. You weren't there, so if you wanna take a walk, you're more than welcome. I, in my opinion, you're not gonna see anything. You're gonna walk to the edge of the field, and you're gonna see a wall of trees, which is their property line. And that's all you're gonna see. Whether or not the solar panels start here, or they start here, is what we need to determine. But when you go out there and you walk here, or here, or here, you're gonna see the same wall of trees. You're not gonna see anybody's house, you're not gonna see anybody's anything, you're gonna see a big wall of trees. You're more than welcome to go out there and do that. I can't speak for everybody else, I can speak for myself. In my opinion, I am pretty set on 100 foot, 150 foot setbacks, just because if we start making, again, it's that big old precedence thing, in my opinion. If I start making exceptions, and again, I'm just a single vote, I'm not speaking for, for everybody on the board. But if we start making exceptions for you, and we start letting you go ask neighbors if they're okay with it, well, that neighbor might be, but then they sell their house next week, and then the new people aren't. So, and to me, I was curious to see how many people thought differently. I actually thought this room would be full of people today, which I'm quite surprised they're not. Not one person from the, from the, from the park is here advocating for themselves, or advocating for their line of sight, or advocating for anything, which I'm quite surprised about. But with that being said, they have their right to do what they wanna do. As far as I'm concerned, I do not, if you had, if you came to me and you couldn't, you, you couldn't, you were asking to put solar field in that buffer for a particular important reason, except for just wanting more electricity, then I'd kinda say, oh, maybe. But you basically just want more electricity, which is understandable, you know, the world revolves around money, I understand that. But if I give you the waiver to come outside, and again, I'll, I'll be brutally honest with you, I'll be brutally honest with you. If you had 150 feet on this side and you were good, you had 150 feet on this side and you were good, and you came to me and said, hey, we can only get 140 on this side, 'cause we're trying to get another row, I'd really consider maybe giving you that 10 feet. I'm being brutally on, on TV. But with you coming to me saying, I need, you know, I only got 70 feet over here because, you know, we need more panels, I only have, you know, 60 feet over here, and you're asking for, you know, 90 foot waiver, and the same on this side, I can't do that. I, personally, I can't vote for that.
Thank you. Every time I'm in front of you guys, from March all the way through now, late November, you guys have said the exact same thing, and every time I go home, I feel like I can get you guys to change your mind. But as I said at the opening, I'm done, I don't wanna ask anymore, we're okay to remove the panels, so...
I am in the exact same position as the chairman.
Thank you.
I am too.
All right, well, can't blame you for trying.
Bad president if we, we do that.
You gave it a good try.
Gave it a lot of good tries.
Yeah, you did.
All right, those, those pink panels are gone then.
Okay.
Ryan, where are you at?
No, he's with the safety, yeah.
So with those pink panels gone, with technical review done by GAF, that's where we had reached out to Victoria to ask to, to close the meeting and simply issue the approval with the condition that we remove those panels and update the plans. And that's the place that we're in, that we'd like to request.
And I think you're, you're, you're right at that finish line, you really are. And I've been behind that podium where you're, where you are, and I know how it feels to want it to just be done, so it can be done. There's just a couple of, even though they're minute, there's still a couple of questions that this board needs answered. Rick brought up a few concerns that he still has, which I can't ignore. Rick wants to go out and take a walk, I feel he should. And on my left, these two gentlemen have an issue with the spillway going over onto other properties. These are questions that, at the moment, I do not have the answers to. I think they're relatively easy answers to get, and to be honest with you, I don't think they're gonna actually, I mean, unless I'm totally, totally wrong, I don't think it's gonna obstruct you very long. But we are going to have to continue this, at least till the next meeting, to get the answers that the board is still looking for, as minute as they may be.
Thank you.
And board, help me, you are looking for...
I, I would, I would look to you and the Conservation Commission, especially the Conservation Commission at this point, to give me some reassurance that those ponds aren't gonna be filled up before the rain comes in the spring and, and channel the water in any way, shape, or form differently than it's going right now. I mean, that's, that's probably the simplest way to put it.
Any issues?
No.
I'm all good. Besides the spillways, any issues?
I am, no.
Okay. I mean, I liked the last page that you showed with the distance from our neighbor's tree line height, distance. That was a great visual to actually see, so I appreciate that. And I, I liked the screening in the front, and I liked the stockade fence all the way around, which should alleviate the mobile park view, which I think I'm more concerned about than they are, since they're not here. So, we're gonna continue this until December 4th, which is our next meeting. We'll get some answers that we're looking for on mostly the conservation side of things. And then I, I'll see why we can't have an answer for you then.
All right, well, I think Mr. Ellis getting into the site, you don't need me there. The conversations with Conscom on the spillway and stormwater, and even GAF, you don't need me on.
Nope.
So I think the only thing I'm gonna do is come in with a set with no pink panels on them, and that'll be handed off to Victoria for the next meeting.
There you go.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, and I appreciate your, your cooperation.
And the number of trees.
Trees, I see.
I would make a...
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, yes, I forgot about that one.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you.
I saw him writing notes, but I didn't know we wrote that one, so...
Didn't, no.
Yeah, thank you.
I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing to December 4th.
We have a motion.
A second to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Moving along. Discussions. Minor modification of approved site plan of the Acushnet slash New Bedford line, map seventeen, lot twenty-two B, dot thirteen, applicant owner, White's Farm, Inc., Representative Matthew Connors slash Wesley Sampson. Scope of the work is proposed modification of a four point nine megawatt solar photovoltaic development, also known as Park Drive Solar. This proponent has asked to continue, so they will continue to the December fourth meeting. With that being said, I'm actually going to backtrack up to the minutes. Gentlemen, you were all sent an email for the minutes of the October second meeting, we were all in attendance. Has anybody had a chance to take a look? Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm all set with... I make a motion to accept the minutes from October second.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And then we also have a sec for November sixth. November sixth, that was October second, this is November sixth. Steve, you were the only one not in attendance. The rest of you gentlemen, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm all set with that one, I'll say.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written for the October, nope, I'm sorry, November sixth meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Done, done, done. We will continue the discussion of the Business Village District also on our December fourth meeting. Nothing new has arrived in the last forty-eight hours. Gentlemen, do you have anything you need to add or discuss?
I'll say.
Our next meeting is Thursday, December fourth. It is seven fifteen. Take a motion?
Take a motion to close it.
Take a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.